Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And I will start with any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, seeing none. John is sitting in, John Stewart, our business manager, is sitting in for David Young, who is attending his son's event up in Montreal, I believe.
That's right.
Any amendments to the agenda?
No, there aren't.
All right. I'll make one amendment to the agenda. We have an opportunity to recognize one of our key board members, Dan Fleming, for his service on the board. Our next meeting is not till after-town meeting, and I wanted to just turn it over for a couple minutes to John to make a few comments.
Thank you. I just want to tell you, I met Dan on October 30th, 2009. It was a Citizens Budget Advisory Meeting. In the six and a half years since, you've challenged me as business manager of this wonderful district to take the long-term view in matters relating to finances of the district. You've helped us in many ways, including assistance with our staff retirement plan, capital planning, communication of Act 60, Act 68, Act 46, Senate Bill X, funding issues, and a deep knowledge of energy issues and how they can be looked at. You've played devil's advocate at times, asked if the math works, and many others. And you've given much. I'm sure you know more about the state education funding formula, how it works, than many people in the state, 99 percent of them. Your compilation of budget facts and analysis from 2008 until the present gives us 10 years of history to anyone interested in the budget for South Burlington schools. And Dan has done this, I'll show you in a minute. It's posted on our district website, 10 years of history about the budget, and not just the budget book, but facts that could be useful in the future, enrollment, our employment, all kinds of things. And it's posted on our website. And for this, I thank you for your service.
Thank you. And you, the rest of you, too. A great part.
I think.
Dan, I want to, if you want to.
Sure.
Pass that on.
Well, first of all, I just do want to show you this South Burlington School District budget history, and Dan has faithfully kept that up for time he's been involved here. And also, we have a gift from the business office and the district.
And the district.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's been a pleasure.
And let me make a quick comment as well. Dan, your faithful, willing service and positive approach to all challenges are greatly appreciated by your colleagues. Your commitment to the students and the community are admired by all. We thank you for your dedicated service to the student staff in the schools of South Burlington School District, 2013 to 2016. It's been my personal pleasure serving with you, Dan. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And there's someone in the audience here who really needs to be thanked for tolerating my coming to these meetings.
Well, and we want to thank her, too. There's always, there's always a bunch of family members who support our service on the board, and John, we are so appreciative of your supporting Dan and providing his time and his energy toward the community of South Burlington. So, thank you so much, John.
Thank you. Wow.
Dan, thank you. We're going to create an emeritus position for you, I think.
Okay. We'll talk about that.
Again, not paid, but.
Again, not paid, huh?
All right, why don't we move on to our student representative report, announcements and student voice, Norelli?
So, the midwinter break is next week, February 22nd to March 1st. The NVAC cheerleading competition was held at South Burlington this past Saturday, and the cheerleading team took first place, and the team consists of 14 students, which is awesome. The South Burlington DECA team competed at the Vermont State's DECA competition for the fifth year in a row, and 41 students from SBHS competed, and the results really do speak for themselves. And personally, I'm president of the, I was president of the organization, and really, South Burlington stood out among the rest, and it really speaks to our students and to our advisor, Ms. Amy. And anyway, so, with, along with all the medals and all the places that SB students placed, they took home over $41,000 in scholarships as well. And lastly, Chris Kenlin, the FHT Middle School mathematics teacher, co-authored an article in the most recent issues of mathematics teaching in the middle school. And according to the journal's editor, over 25,000 individual institutions received copies of the journal, and it really is a significant accomplishment. And also, just some winter sports are wrapping up, like hockey, boys and girls hockey, boys and girls basketball, and the state competition for cheerleading, and Dan's team will be this Saturday. Yeah, so, yeah.
Terrific, thank you. Any other announcements from other board members?
One quick note, so we have a guest, well, it's not really a guest, somebody who's joined us tonight, Wendell Coleman, who is a recent, recently moved to South Burlington, still in the process of, I think, becoming a voter here, so we can't push him on that. But he's on the Vermont School Board Association with me, and serves on the board of, what school board?
Milltown Red.
In Milltown's Red, okay. So, welcome to the first.
Thank you. Welcome.
I have one thing also, as far as student representative. Principal Burke has sent, has two names of juniors who are interested in being on the board, and David will refer those to the board committee soon.
And Norelli, do you have, I know I had asked for an update on kind of the process by which you would recommend the board consider these two candidates?
Yeah, so I was also talking to Mr. Burke, and I created like a mock application, and I was kind of inspired by the student representative application for the Vermont State Board of Ed, but I guess tailored it for like this role specifically. And I'll email that out to you this night, and he, Mr. Burke, said that he would get the application to the students that were interested, and try to push it out towards as many students as possible.
Great. Great. So, it looks like we'll be taking that step in short order here. Good.
Okay, I just want to bring up that, I talked to Delaine about this earlier, but I've taken a few different calls asking for the calendar for next year, and I guess that we're, we're going to see it next meeting, right? So, I just wanted to tell everybody that in case you also get questions about it.
Usually, we've seen it by now, but it's a little later. Great. All right, any other announcements? All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item Six, City and School Collaboration. And in David's absence, I think we've had at least, he and I have had another, at least one other meeting with the Chair of the City Council, Pat Nowak, and with the City Manager, Kevin Dorn. There are a number of areas we've talked about following the legislative breakfast that we had earlier in the month, or I can't remember how long ago it was now. And we'll continue to follow up on those. I think our shared objective is preparation for town meeting, and I think we're meeting the, do we have the date on that? Monday, the?
29th.
29th. And that will both be presentation of budgets as well as candidate forums, and our focus is on really trying to encourage voter turnout on Tuesday. And then beyond that, I think we're also, I think we updated you the last time that Kevin has reached out to David Zuckerman, and kind of to determine whether or not there's an interest in having some kind of follow-up on the marijuana legalization conversations that we initially had in terms of understanding some of the unintended consequences by municipal government, both schools and city. So, that is still in the works, and we haven't heard anything back yet, I think, from Kevin on that.
Just on that issue real quickly, the VSB did adopt a position that they're taking to the State House, and you probably would want to see that. I can, it's probably on the, I'm sure it's on the website, if not, I'll check and I'll email it.
Is it similar to the VSA, do you know?
I think it's essentially modeled after the VSA, so.
Great.
I think, is there any student voiced opinion on the legalization of marijuana?
Not, I want to be careful about how I say this. I think there isn't any strong opinions from students that don't necessarily have encounters with marijuana.
Okay. Well said. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I have a quick couple of things. The very cold night Saturday night, Sunday morning, our schools were open for people who had lost power, and we're thankful the power came back up. It was supposed to be off five to six hours, and it was off less. But we had a bus driver come, called at 2:30, came with a warm bus, the Red Cross was here, and I appreciate, Fire Chief Brent keeps us all informed on weather conditions and all that kind of thing, so I appreciate that, because it was a really cold night.
So, John, how did people know that the school was open for their use if they needed it?
Not sure, because I, David and his, and some of the crew, I didn't even know about until Monday.
Just curious, because our power was flicking off, too.
Yeah.
Well, and I did have that conversation with David, and technically, through the emergency exercises, the middle school apparently is identified as a go-to location, but something happened that, I don't know if it was the power, but the middle school wasn't usable, so.
The generator kicked on and then kicked out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, the high school was designated, but I did, I did ask David if that isn't something that we shouldn't report out in the other paper, just for future reference, because I do know a number of residents or households were without power, and that for, you know, for certain populations, that's a health, for everybody, but for certain populations, even more so, of a health hazard, so. So, we may try to publicize that, maybe that's something you could give him feedback on.
Okay.
Anything else on?
Well, they also, our tennis courts, it's a kind of an odd situation. The tennis courts near our athletic fields are owned by the city, and right now, they're not playable. The surfaces are too uneven, there are cracks, so the city's going to work really hard to get those ready. We're going to have to find some alternative practice time in March and April, so, but they're, they're working great. They tried to get a grant to fix it, and that's one of the things that the city, yes, it's their responsibility, and they're trying to get things moving for us.
So, do they have to be resurfaced, or?
Yes, yes.
Completely?
Well, there's, there are degrees of fixing, but it's, it's a stopgap. They do have some longer-term plans that aren't finalized yet, but, so it'd be to get us through a couple of seasons.
And do we use the edge in lieu of that?
Yes, yes.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, the superintendent's report.
In the superintendent's report this time, is a resolution for you to look at this week, and we have questions on it. This resolution will come to you on March 2nd if the bond issue passes, and it's a, it contains regulations from the IRS standpoint about use, use and how funds are designated for use in a bond. What happens is our bond won't be issued until July, because we go with the state bond bank, even though it's authorized on March 1st. But in order to get projects done in the interim, the planning has to go on, and we are not authorizing anything to really be done until after the voters say yes. So, first of all, this lets us start spending architect and engineer money, engineering money, right after this is passed on March 2nd. Also, there's a kind of a nebulous, the question came from the board, about the 60 days prior to the date of this resolution, it would seem to authorize us to be able to count some of those costs in, in, and count them against the bond. We haven't, we haven't accumulated any costs, but our attorney will have it, have that clarified for the March 2nd meeting, so. If, when we last repurposed the bond, we had to wait until midsummer, so we didn't get a good jump on our elevator, and that's not anything we want to do with the, we want to get them done this summer.
Any questions on the proposed resolution? So, we'll get that question answered, and then pending the outcome of the vote, we'll be prepared to approve that.
That's right. On March 2nd, it'll be on the agenda for action.
Any questions on that from board or audience? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, the administrative report on the Schools Out program.
Well, we're going to, we're in the same vein that we did last time with Rhonda. Lee's going to present the report, and.
Great. Where do you want me?
You can sit at the table next to Norelli, if you'd like.
All right. Thanks for having me. You just cut me off, I go on too long, because sometimes I get going, and, you know, I'm like a proud dad. I just, I can go.
Time's up.
Yeah, that's it. So, I'll briefly go over the report here, starting with a summary of last year's program. We, we, one of the biggest changes last year was a modification to our enrollment process. Prior to the enrollment for last year, families were required to, to come out and register in person, and a line would often form. Some of you have probably been in the line, so, the, eventually, it got to the point where we had people arriving up to 24 hours early for, for this. So, obviously, this is really not convenient for families, but also didn't seem fair in a lot of ways as well. So, I presented to David that we expand our capacity further, we've expanded capacity every year, so that we could accommodate all families with a little bit of a, kind of a stopgap that we would have a lottery if it went above 10 percent what we were expecting. So, does that make sense? So, two years now, we haven't had to institute this lottery, and everybody who registered by the spring deadline was enrolled in the fall. And then we maintain a rolling waitlist, where we'll, we'll keep four or five kids on the waitlist, and then enroll them all at one time, and add another staff person if necessary. So, we're really feeling like we're actually serving the full community now, which is great. In addition, one big change last year is we, we added, to accommodate for all these extra kids we had, we added a kindergarten-only program at two of the schools, two of the bigger schools, Orchard and Rick Marcot, and we operate these kindergarten-only programs in separate parts of the school, and there's between 15 and 25 kindergarteners in those two programs, and they've been just absolutely amazing. The kids love it. Families are really appreciative of this, because kindergarten parents sometimes are a little nervous about the unknown, and having their kids with big bad fifth graders, which, you know, fifth graders are actually great mentors for the younger kids, and, but that program's been a huge success. Not listed here is also a homework club option that we're running out of Chamberlain Elementary School, which has, we invite other students outside of our program to join that as well. So, that's in partnership with Chamberlain. Our current enrollment is actually up to 420 students, up from 310 last year, so we're serving a lot more families, as intended. One other change that we made this past year was that we allowed families to, to choose to enroll in any combination of days. So, prior to that, we, we had families choose either Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and people just have different schedules. So, we opened that up, families can choose any combination of days, and as a result, we have more part-time enrollees, which has bumped that total number up. But really, we're only serving about 10 percent more this year than the year prior, daily.
What's the amendment, Lee, for a schedule? Just, I'm thinking about that being a staffing nightmare, if that change is weekly.
We try to be accommodating, but families, they have to pay a fee technically if they, if, when they change. I require at least a two-weeks notice for any sort of significant change, but if the change doesn't affect our staffing in any way, we'll, we'll, we'll make the change immediately. But families do understand that there's two weeks' notice minimum, and more is preferred, So, that's that. We're serving over 100 kids at Rick Marcot, close to 100 at Orchard, this is on a daily basis, and up to 90 at Chamberlain, which is pretty impressive, given the population of the school. It's total, we're almost 45 percent of the total population participating in our program in one way or another, which is just really good numbers. So, since we're now at over 100 kids at some schools and close to 100 at others, that's an increase from just a few years ago, where we were at 65, 55. We've, we've really grown. So, we added an administrative position. My assistant coordinator, who previously would have only a half-time administrative duties, is now full-time administrative, so that's great. Tuttle, we have ceased operation of the middle school program temporarily. We will take a look at interest in the fall and see if it's worthwhile to open that program back up, but our numbers just dwindled there. As they have the last three years, they start out strong and then slowly dwindle away, and I think that's because families are nervous about the unknown again, and are familiar with our program. But as they find out there are lots of other options, they, they choose other options, so. Our summer camps are thriving. We've, we will be, last year, we operated two camps, one at Orchard, one at Chamberlain, and we'll do the same again this year. We offer what we call TREC camps, which stands for Travel, Recreation, Experience, and Knowledge, and we just, we're getting ready to publish those at the end of this week, and we've got some really exciting new ones. Just a teaser, Mission Impossible Camp, which is going to be really popular. I can't give away too many secrets here, but some spy espionage, solving mysteries, CSI forensic stuff, it's going to be a huge hit. And then, all of our programs have reading, writing, and math components built into them. The TREC camps, camps in particular, involve a lot of reading about the subject, and then journaling, and our, our other camps have daily times for reading and math that are choice-driven, so kids choose activities that they want to be a part of. For example, reading, we have book clubs, we have readers theater, we have, what else? Read aloud, all sorts of reading choices, so the kids can choose what they want, and they, they keep track of their hours throughout the summer, and we have prizes that they can win for, for reading a lot in the summer, which is great. So, that's kind of the fun stuff.
Summer camps, how does that compete with the rec, or does it compete with the rec department?
We try not to compete. We actually, I meet with them on occasion to talk about what, what we're doing, what they're doing. We, we do, our base programs are very similar. They operate out of Central School, we operate out of Chamberlain and Orchard School, so I think we're all serving the community together, as far as location. And then they also have a lot of other kind of enrichment camps and sports camps and stuff that they run as well, so we usually check to make sure we're not offering a similar service.
Is there, is there any benefit to standardizing that for certain age groups that are at the schools, one way or the other?
Possibly. What I hear is that families really like the consistency of having the same staff that they have during the school year. So, we really, I'd say, this is a guess, but 90 to 95 percent of our students are after-school students as well, so we don't bring in a lot of new kids from outside of our community.
Do you know if that's different at, at Central School, Rick Marcot?
I, I, I don't know the, exactly. I think we do have a good number of kids from Rick Marcot that join the other programs, but I have to take a look at that closer to see what the breakdown is.
And just for my benefit, how did that historically get separated, that Schools Out does two of the schools, and the rec department does one?
Last year was the first year that we did two. Prior to that, we just did Orchard, and it just got a little too big, you know, 120 kids in one school. It's a lot, so it just made sense for us to move out. Also, we, summer school was at Orchard last, last year, and so we supported that program, but that also meant a lot more kids. So, actually, we only ran our Chamberlain site while the special ed ESY program was running at Orchard, just again to divide and conquer.
Thanks.
We have a nutritional services has been asked by the summer rec program, the cities, to run a summer lunch program out of Central, so they're preparing a contract for us to review.
Chamberlain, I think.
And at the same time, Chamberlain, Rhonda's looking, working with the state to see if there's a nutritional program that we can run at Chamberlain also for summer school. And that's, that's, that just is a new development the last couple of days, so we're going to meet as a group, the principal and our central office administrators, to see what that means, and can we do it, and, you know, that kind of thing.
So, the rest is a lot of numbers. I assume you've got to look at those. Any questions about, about the financial side of things?
I just have a question about, sorry to bring up a bad topic.
No, go ahead.
Where the, the accounts that are overdue are reflected here in this? I don't see them here.
We're, in Policy 2.5.
Yep.
I have a report, it's brief, about where we were.
Right.
Where we are, and some current things that we're dealing with, with nutritional, with Schools Out.
Okay.
There are, we've been able to cut down the old receivable amount from $90,000 to 74, but we're almost at a point, and we have to wrap this up, in May, that some of those accounts would be recommended to be written off. However, no one in this room, except board members, have the authority to do that, so we'll get you information about specific accounts, as to what diligence has happened, what the circumstances are, you know, keeping names and all that kind of thing out of it, but, so, you can decide, because this is new to the board and, and that kind of thing.
So, is there a recommendation from the auditor about writing those off?
Yes. The recommendation from the auditor is the business office cannot touch them, they're, once they're there. If it was a billing error, of course, but I mean, if it's, has to be written off, it has to come to the board.
Okay.
But so, if I look at, now, why isn't that reflected in, in your, the Schools Out P and L here?
It's, this is a, it's because that's, this is cash. This is, these are cash payments, so.
Balance sheet thing is going to be.
Yes, yes. You don't see that part of it yet.
But, but if we're looking at this, you're looking, Lee, at a projected favorability of about $72,000 this year, which is basically the amount of outstanding.
Well, it is, but we've deferred that amount before. So, in other words, there's, there was $90,000 as a receivable last year. And it shows as an asset, but you also, a liability deferred, or allowance for uncollected debts. So, it, this is new, this is new over and above that.
So, the difference between the 90 and the 74 that you collected, is that reflected here?
Yes, that is, yeah.
And where is it, it's as revenue?
It's in, yes, in revenue, yeah.
And I was curious as to why the current year-to-date is unfavorable, Lee, and the projection goes favorable. It's a net swing of 100 grand.
Right. We, we bring in a lot more money in the, in the spring, and we can look back and see the trend. We also, we collect, and this probably isn't, this is something we may need to change in the future, but we collect our deposit for the summer. for the summer, um, in the spring as well, um, which is about twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and just in general, people tend to settle up their, their debts, um, after Christmas.
You don't really, I mean, in some ca- cases you might, but you, they're really not supposed to register for summer program unless they're caught.
Correct. So there's, there's, they can't register for, for summer or for the following year, um, until, until the debt is paid off.
Other questions from the board?
And families that have, like, true me, there, there are scholarships and things like that, are there?
Yeah. So, um, the, uh, the, the state's subsidy program is, is pretty generous, and so we require, require that families, um, that are intere- that, that are interested in scholarship first apply for that.
Okay.
And then typically, we will waive the co-pays if it's seventy-five to eighty percent, um, if, if a family requests that. Um, it's rare that we get a family that comes in requesting full scholarship. Um, in those situations, I'd bring, I'd bring it to David and, and ask for his, um, approval if, if they have extenuating circumstances.
Sure.
Um, in most situations, it would be a partial scholarship.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I think one other thing would help, and we do this on in Nutritional Services, is break out the, the payments from the state versus the revenue, so you can see.
That would be great.
Kind of get a better.
Yeah, that would be great.
Mix of what happens.
So, I'd just like to say sort of a parting shot.
Sure.
In the years that I've watched this thing evolve, I've really become impressed with how much it's matured and how well, how well these reports are really very readable, very quite understandable. And the fact that you faced some of the issues that are there and dealt with them, both the middle school attendance thing and the, the collected, uncollected debts and all that, I think in a very responsible way. So I just want to applaud what I've seen over those years.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, like I said, a proud dad. I mean, the, this, this side of things, uh, I've, I've been, I've been here thirteen, fourteen years, and this part, I've, I've learned throughout the years, um, the, working with kids thing is, it kind of comes naturally, um, and that's the part I, I really love, but this, this side of things, it's, it's been challenging, but, um, I really appreciate that because it's, uh, um, I feel like I have come a long way with this kind of stuff as well.
You have.
And also the creative programming. I'm impressed that it, it really evolves. That's been evident year to year.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I would also say that, you know, I think one of our frustrations, all of us as a board, is that sometimes where there are programs that we aren't sure what they're doing anymore, but they aren't sunset.
Mm-hmm.
And I think for you to do that to the middle school, when you see it, is, is a great thing.
Yeah.
And it just gives us confidence in you, from my perspective.
Thank you. Well, I, I, one of the last board mem- meetings I attended, I think Elizabeth mentioned that, you know, that I do try a lot of, of things, and, you know, we want everything to be a success, but, um, that can't always be the case when you're trying a lot of new things. And I don't see it as a failure. Um, I think that it still, um, serves a purpose and, and may continue to serve a purpose, but, but at this point.
If you identify a problem and try for a solution, and it doesn't work, find a, find a better one.
Yeah, and we have the, the families that, um, that, the kids who aren't, aren't attending that program anymore, we offered for them to join the other programs and act as, uh, counselors in training, so, um, uh, some of the families took us up on that, and they're great mentors for the, the younger kids.
That's great.
Thank you.
Excuse me, thanks.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Budget Communication Plan. Do you have updates there? I know.
I do. The, um, on Channel Seventeen, uh, Elizabeth and David appeared Monday night, and, um, it was about a half-hour presentation on the budget, and it was very complete. That, um, uh, whatever file we get from RE, from Channel Seventeen, I mean, will be on our website soon, as soon as Delina gets it. So, and that was a pretty concise way of, of, uh, getting the word out. There was, uh, David and, David was there briefly, but Amity Denton and I went to the city hall to the senior, um, seniors' center today and had lunch. While everybody's eating, we told them about the budget and answered questions, so that, that was very exciting for me. It's just, uh, I met a gentleman who's my age there, so I, I was like, wow. I am a senior. But anyway, um, Stuart Weiss is all, every, usually at our meetings. He's at PTO at Chamberlain tonight going through our budget. Um, we have a wonderful display in this school and in the high school, um, that's been up for ten days about our budget and our bond issue, that, um, I mentioned Deb, Deb Pyle put it together, and she made enough to, for the high school to put it up too, so gotten some visibility there. The other paper has had our one-page, um, summary of the budget. It was in last week, and, uh, Patrick's article's been in there. Um, Patrick Burke has done front-page forum posting today, I believe, or yesterday, about voting, and he, he will have that, um, uh, your, your, your voice is your vote on our website also. So that's, those are the things I, I know about.
Does the, do we have the button on the website that allows folks to go to register?
I.
Or get an absentee ballot?
Pat sent that out today or last night to parents.
Well, this is more on the district website. We used to have that toggle button.
Yeah.
We still have it?
Pat sent it to me today. I just haven't had a chance to put that stuff up yet today.
Oh, we just, oh, I, I didn't realize that it hasn't been on there with the budget.
No.
We've had a link on there to city, to the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Take you, take you to a similar place, but no, hasn't been on our website.
I know as of last Friday, approximately three hundred absentee ballots had been sent in already.
Do we know how that compares to?
Um, much higher than usual, so.
Good. Any other venues coming up?
I don't think so. This is the time of year where the break starts Friday and it's a little bit harder to get the word out.
So the twenty-ninth is the next big one.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to the legislative update. Item ten.
Do you want me to give it up?
Yeah, I think you have better information than I would ever have now, since our, our cap thing has been settled.
I'll just tell you about the relevant stuff. How about that?
Uh, one thing is that there's still unclear where we're going to land as far as probably the most important thing going on in the legislature right now, which is the, um, yield with the, the one dollar. Uh, so it's really hard to, to say. Uh, I'll be a little surprised if it's as high as what we were given and what we based our, our, the budget book on. I think it's going to be lower than that, but I don't know how much lower. I still, from what I understand, it's a pretty good chance that we're still going to, yeah, very good chance that we're still going to be, you know, a decrease in the tax rate. It's just about, it's just a matter of how much, but that's still somewhat up, up in the air. And the biggest issue is, is what, how they use, uh, this, uh, there's twenty million dollars that is essentially more or surplus from having less costs on special ed, is my understanding, and it's whether they spread that twenty million dollars over two years or, or use it all for this year. Is that, that's at least the big part, and we still haven't heard about what all the budgets are coming in as, and, and that's going to impact that. So that's the one, the one thing. As far as what the ed committee's working on right now, uh, it may have some impact on us. It's, it's, it's a little unclear what it will be, but it's looking at governance of the tech centers and potentially changing the governance of the tech centers to be more in line with the state schools. I mean, that's very preliminary, but that seems to be what, one of the things they are focusing on. Have not heard much about whether there's going to be a different spending threshold next year. I think that's up in the air. I know from the VSBAs' point of view, one thing that we just at the last meeting, uh, agreed to is, is a push to make sure there are no additional unfunded mandates, uh, given everything else that's going on. And I think that's my read of the ed committee, is that they really are not looking to any additional initiatives that they're going to foist on, on school boards. Um, the other day, I actually suggested if there were any places that they could back off of things, but, uh, so far I haven't seen them take me up on that. Uh, the one other thing is marijuana should be coming over to the house in the next couple of weeks, and, and that seems to be gaining actually momentum from, uh, what I've seen, but, you know, it's, it's still has a ways to go whether it's going to make it through the house this year. So those are the things I know. Do you know when crossover is going to be yet? Uh, the Friday after, uh, town meeting week, so I guess that'd be the second Friday of March. So, I think that's all that's rolling, that I know of.
Any other questions on legislative activity? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eleven, which is review topic for the other paper article. And I think I'm on deck to draft an, a column on healthcare. Um, Delina, do we have the due date for that, just so I can?
It depends. Do you want it the first? It's the Thursday before.
I have it, and, and I know I have it at home.
Were we doing the first or second? Because I know we're.
Do you recall if you did it the first Thursday of the month?
I don't recall, it wasn't one of the emails we sent out. We should probably just put that schedule on our agenda toward the bottom somewhere, so we don't lose track of it.
I'm next, after you.
I think it might be original one that Delina sent out.
For publication.
On the agenda, so we don't.
No, next Thursday for submission.
Okay, so my goal, if it's next Thursday, my goal would be get a draft over the weekend to the board for review. So that, that will be my target. Relative to healthcare, um, the, some of the focal areas will be that the district spends about, about twenty-six percent of total wages is spent on healthcare benefits. Um, the district spent on that for two thousand seventeen is about five-point-eight million dollars. Um, the increase through VHI, the educators' healthcare initiative over the past six or seven years has been about thirty-six percent over that time horizon in premiums. Now, over ninety percent of our employees are on one of the plan options called the VHI Dual Option Plan. Um, the VHI Board has made an announcement of four plans that will, um, replace all existing plans effective January of two thousand eighteen, and those include two HRA-compatible plans and two HSA-compatible plans. There are some education sessions that are scheduled in, largely in March throughout the state, focused primarily on the negotiating teams for collective bargaining, and then following that, um, VHI will be sponsoring employee education seminars as well. Um, so there's a lot of activity going on right now in preparation for that transition to new plans in January of two thousand eighteen. More to come, but we've got a good analysis of, uh, both what our district spends on healthcare. Employees spend about nine-hundred-and-forty-five thousand toward healthcare, so about, about four percent toward that. Um, and, uh, in terms of both healthcare and total benefits, but the focus of, uh, the other paper article will really be on some of the trends, uh, what the representation of total compensation healthcare, the healthcare benefits are, and then the transition to new plans as well. Any other questions or comments relative to the article that will be coming out? All right, you'll see a draft. Why don't we move to Agenda Item Twelve, Master Planning and Visioning Update? I'd look to David to do that update, John.
I'll do my best here. We've had a subcommittee working with Burke and White, uh, David and Annette and myself, and we've been pushing real hard. Uh, Burke and White is developing a, um, a matrix, a, a formula to evaluate options, and pretty much leaving no stone unturned, looking at costs and, um, enrollment projections, uh, a, a number of factors, and questioning all of them, really, going back to, um, information that was in the, in the original, um, the planning group last year, the master planning group last year, and then actually conferring with, uh, Frank Locker, again, architects, uh, attorneys, to see what, what's available, what's not. So it's been pretty comprehensive, and the board's been briefed, um, a couple of times. We have a view toward the last complete week in March to have the public meeting.
I think we've targeted, uh, or tentatively, March twenty-second. I don't know if that's been communicated, but that was the date that we had talked about, um, starting to publicize relative to, for community feedback. And that, I'll call it tentative right now because David's not here to confirm that, but.
Right.
Yeah, and I think just to refresh, um, the public that's here and for those that might be watching, the board was evaluating five options, um, two of which came from the task force, and one is a, a base case scenario, obviously, a, a kind of a status quo with stewardship, um, with an emphasis on both, uh, the cost of those options as well as an evaluation of education quality. I think that's probably a high-level summary. And our goal is to have some or all of those options available for community feedback on the twenty-second. Any other board member comments relative to where we're at in the process?
One thing we.
Oh, go ahead, John.
I apologize. Uh, one thing we did do, which we hadn't done before, was look at grants and funding sources maybe from the federal government through, uh, nutritional services there, you know, uh, or rural utility services and that kind of thing. It, it hasn't been real promising, but there are some open doors for other funding that, um, so we're, we're going to continue to pursue that.
Bridgette.
Yeah, I guess the quick question is, if we're expecting the public to be ready to comment on the twenty-second of March, is there a timeline for when they might be able to see some information that they could comment on or ask for thoughts about, or I'm just, I know people are going to ask me, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I, we have not talked about the forum for presenting the options for feedback. It would likely be, the options would be presented and discussed on some portion of that meeting, and then some kind of a, a leader-led roundtable discussion. We, we haven't nailed that format down yet.
Okay.
I would not anticipate having detailed options available prior to that.
Okay. I would just say that if that's going to be the format, you might want to plan for another one reasonably soon after that.
Fair.
Because I can already hear the shouting on Facebook.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Good. All right, any other questions or comments? Good. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Thirteen, Executive Limitations Policy Monitoring on Two Point Five, Financial Planning and Budgeting.
One thing I did want to say is there was a schedule that didn't come to you until Monday on, um, our stewardship plan, so there's a copy at your desk if you hadn't seen it yet.
So we, uh, we've worn this for action, correct?
Uh, yes, yes.
So why don't we go through it the way we normally would? We'll start with the individual detail policies and then kind of come back and we'll see how far we get with this.
There's, just the date is wrong. On the front page, it says covering the year ending, I think it should say June thirtieth, fifteen.
It does.
Is that right? Yeah.
You know, I saw that too after I forgot.
Just checking up on you, John.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So starting with Detail Policy One, uh, the superintendent shall, we'll just start with that, "Risk incurring those situations or conditions described as unacceptable in the board policy, financial condition, and activities."
I made one comment, uh, in preparation for the meeting, uh, that I think David was working on related to the proactive nature of that.
Run number one.
The, the reactive ways.
On, on Detail Policy One?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, we're, you're waiting for feedback on that?
Yeah.
We had a discussion about that today. Um, if, if, um... If, if an example probably that we'd use would be the bidding process that we went through last year in this period to get a construction manager in here. The, there are special rules you have to go through when a project's over 500,000. It's pretty new to everybody.
Right.
And I think that may be what you're after, instead of we goofed up or, sorry, we weren't as good as you should have been here.
Wait till you find the mistakes. Your procedures are clearly structured so that you don't have problems.
Yeah.
So, I was just saying, articulate that.
Okay.
So, that was your question relative to interpretation?
Yes.
So, right now, we cannot evaluate interpretation then. That, will that lead, though, to not being able to evaluate adequate data? I'll just ask that question before, if interpretation is-
It would, it would seem logical that if we don't have the right interpretation, that he, if he changes the interpretation, he may change the evidence. I would assume that to be true.
So, are there additional comments on the evidence for Detail Policy 1?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I just, I mean, so last, the last time we reviewed this, one of the issues was the student activity accounts, the issues with those that came up in the audit, and that was in the compliance plan. And I just, I, I think it's just the way I'm not understanding this, John, but I, it feels like if there was something in the compliance plan last time, and we're still out of compliance, and, and it doesn't address the student activities accounts, I'm just wondering if it should either say like that we solved it and that's off the table. It's just, since it's not addressed, but it was kind of hanging in the balance last time. I just don't know how to, because I, I don't know how everybody else goes through these, but I go through last, the last one too, just to see what, where we were, to remind myself, so.
I think what happens is that the management letter has current issues.
Right.
And they, they go through that pretty comprehensively and didn't find, didn't note it this time, so.
Okay.
It dropped off the table, but it could be in our summary. That's what you mean, so that it doesn't be lost, it's not lost for the reader?
Yeah, I mean, I guess for the record, it would be nice to just see how it was-
Close off the issue.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Other feedback on Detail Policy 1?
I have just one that I have to bring up, since it's Dan's last day here as a school board member. This is, in that with the respect to the enterprise funds, you know, when you look at this, you see our, our negative balance that we keep on talking about for nutritional services, but why in the eyes of the auditors is that, that negative not offset by the positive in the other enterprise funds?
Well, it is, it is.
So, so really, they're worried about us getting the $146,000, you know, that's the amount that they're worried that, because whenever I hear them talk, they say, "We have to pay off this $355,000 of the nutritional services, not the net from the enterprise funds of 146," or if I just always misunderstood that.
Is that a solution?
Don't you have to account for the individual enterprise funds, and then the consolidation reconciles the balances between the two?
That's right. For instance, Muntzen Field, that revenue, the, the way you're saying in consolidation, it's helping the overall deficit, but that money still is supposed to be used, has been dedicated to help pay off, pay off the turf field. So, and same with schools out money, that's collected from parents for a specific purpose, of which will be in jeopardy if we use it to pay off nutritional services.
You can't mix the funds.
Well, it's not really paying off, it's, it's all kind of-
Right, and our position was-
It's just on the balance book, is what I, and that's why I'm lobbying this over Dan.
Well, my, my issue with the nutrition services thing only has been that internally this balances, and we consistently go put it on the budget and go ask for more funds for it. And it's that flow of that funds that I've never understood. To me, to me, we have the power, the board has the power, to just declare that the two things offset each other, but they have to declare it, okay? You can't, you can't do it unless you declare it, is my understanding. So, as I've understood, and I don't know that John and I agree on this at all, but the, the, as I have understood it from the auditors, what they're really saying is the board has got to take action to take care of this, okay? And there are several actions that can take place, okay? One of them is to just call it a bad debt and bounce it off, in my opinion.
Well, could that happen, John? Could we do that much like you're talking about doing with the schools out accounts? Could we say this is kind of a bad debt expense?
Well, the problem with that is that all the revenues and expenses are recorded. If it's a bad debt expense, it's a bad debt of the district, and the district nutritional service fund doesn't have any money to write it off with, so then it would have to be a bad debt of the general fund, and then there would be an expense in the general fund. That's, that's, that's how it works.
Yeah, okay.
All right, well, I just thought I'd try to bounce off the good news in the schools out against the bad news in the nutrition service.
Yeah, what I haven't liked about it is that we continually put a budget item in that ends up, it's small, I mean, it's fractions of fractions of cents, okay, in terms of its effect on the tax rate and everything, but, but it's an expense that rather than being reconciled somehow within the district, we keep passing it along incrementally to the, to the voters, and it's just a principle that I don't like about the whole thing. But John is probably right about what the accounting practice demands, okay?
Right. Okay, sorry to have brought that up again, John.
No, no.
I'm going to bring up two or three times more before you are out of here too.
Well, it's all through this report, so there we go.
No, not tonight, just, you know, the next four months.
All right, so we will not-
There's nothing that we're doing fundamentally wrong here in the eyes of the auditors, which I guess is the spirit in which I review this, this document, okay?
Just, just to clarify that, the auditors would prefer that we take that right off now, they would have preferred it four years ago.
That we'd resolved it.
We didn't resolve it, what happened was-
They would prefer that we had resolved.
Yes, yes.
How would they, how would they propose that we resolve it?
Take it from the fund balance in the general fund now and-
Instead of putting $50,000 in, put 350,000 in.
Pay the whole thing.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Give another penny and a half from the community.
Couple, couple of years ago, I objected to that, and that's where the 50,000 came from, okay? Partly, I went to the 50,000 because I knew if it was 50,000, we had to talk about it, okay?
Yeah. All right. All right, so we will not evaluate Detail Policy 1. Let's move on to Detail Policy 2. Any feedback on the superintendent's inter, oh, let me read it quickly first. This is to, shall not allow, omit, or omit credible projection of revenues and expenses, separation of capital and operational items, cash flow, disclosure of planning assumptions, and predicted financial impact. Any questions or concerns on the superintendent's interpretation?
Again, I had a couple that I had sent to David. I don't think they're material changes, but I'll be honest with you, the, in the question document that we have at our tables, I can't, it's not clear to me what I asked him to change, so I can't tell you exactly what that was at this point.
I'm sure it was material.
I'm sure it was really meaningful.
So, we will move to any, we will not evaluate that, but we'll move to any questions on evidence.
I did want to point out, it's in yellow right in the middle, that in 2000, the fall of 2014, this, this never, my projection never got to you. I went back and looked and looked and looked. Then I remembered, we were really busy back then with some things, so I didn't want to not say that, didn't want to purport that I got these to you, but we, we had projections, but they weren't, they didn't come in and use the report, so.
If I, so I just saw probably the most meaningful part that I suggested to David. So, at the end of that interpretation, the last sentence, "I interpret predicted financial impact to mean the anticipated residential tax rate of the proposed budget, and the listing of the tax rate variables not controlled by the school district," and I suggested he add at the end of that sentence, "as well as the long-term implications of financial and staffing commitments."
Okay. Any other comments on data within Detail Policy 2, including Patrick? Is there any missing data relative to that addition in the interpretation? I do think if you add that into interpretation, you could, for instance, include multi-year contracts. Or maybe I should ask that as a question, should you include multi-year contracts on a baseline of employees, for instance?
Well, which, if we were to back up, there's a question about whether the board as a group feels like that interpretation addition is appropriate as well.
Well, this is what you suggested to David, or?
I suggested that the interpretation should include the long-term implications of financial and staffing commitments.
It's on the back of your questions.
Oh, yeah. I guess, I guess in the first instance, I mean, I want to understand what David thinks of that interpretation.
Yeah.
You know, before.
I think his, his response is that those changes look good and should be discussed at the meeting, but that doesn't mean he necessarily agrees.
I think that's okay. What, so what would you add in terms of multi-year contracts, Elizabeth? Just the commitment of multi-year contracts?
It might be a wages and, I mean, we know wage and benefits are over 80, you know, 80, almost 85% of total, our total operating budget, so maybe some kind of baseline with an assumption on, on benefits and, and the contractual commitment on a, on a flat cohort of employees, for instance.
That's good.
So, and I think in particular, these long-term things ought to be viewed in the plight of any caps that we get put on spending, and whether we're headed as a train into, into a dark tunnel, we don't know whether there's a light at the end of it or not, okay? So, you know, I know it's somewhat difficult to do, but if any, if we did enter it to anything that had some future consequences. I cite for, just as an example, this, the bond that we're going to go through this year has a relatively minimal impact on this year's budget, it has more impact on future years' budgets than it has on the current year's budget. So, that need, we did discuss that at the time, those kinds of things need to be highlighted and discussed, so that, you know, we don't get surprised when, how come this one up by a factor of four, was on 50,000 this year, 200,000 the next, why did that happen, right? We shouldn't be surprised by things like that.
So, there, there would be a number of things that would fall into, into longer multi-year-
Right.
Contract, whether they're bonds in terms of debt service, whether they're capital improvement projects that, that straddle years.
Labor contracts could do it if there's something abnormal in them.
Yeah.
Because-
I mean, it's kind of potentially opening up perhaps appropriately in that line that the predicted financial impact component of what we've been, and Dan has particularly been pushing for the last few years, and we've gotten starts on it, is having projections more than just a year in advance. So, are we even limiting ourselves in this, or is that going to, is that comprehensive enough?
My only recollection is there were, there was some past board discussion on a couple of different policies, and one was a more tactical operational, so it did sort of reflect an annual event, and another one reflected more of a projected, and I, I don't remember if that ever held true or not. Because this particular one is a little subject, because it says financial planning, but it says for any fiscal year. But, but then it goes on to say fail to be derived from a multi-year plan, so we clearly addressed the multi-year before. You don't recall that, Dan? Was any of the, were any of the policies limited to a fiscal year?
Well, it's, I mean, it had been limited to the, no, I mean, basically, we moved it up a year or two ago, we moved, we moved, we squeezed, we squeezed the time period between the time it was being reported on and the time that, and the, and the current stuff, so. And I think we got to the point where, John, I think we pushed you to the comfort limit as to where you thought you had data that you could really report on some of these things, but it's still left open the idea of where do we, where do some of these things head into the future? And I don't, I think in the past, there was some support that we should do something like that, but I don't think we included it in the interpretation of this particular monitoring thing. I mean, it's, you know, we're actually going to have a fair amount of that from what's going on with the visioning activity, okay?
Right.
We're going to have a better look at that than we've had before, okay? I mean, it varies depending on the scenario, but, but, you know, it's, it's woven into that pretty intimately.
Right, and the value would be to try to find some way to maintain that.
Right.
Yeah, the value would be to try to do that without, and the trick here has been to do that in a way in which I think the business office can feel that they can do a responsible job for you to get good enough data to use it as part of a, you know, the danger here is that if it's used as a heads-up and you've got to look at it, that's fine, but if it starts getting used to make decisions, you need to be a little bit careful about what you're doing here, because anything that's out in the future in principle can change.
Sure, sure.
Okay? Whereas, once we, once we lock in on a current year budget, that's pretty much it. I mean, there's a little bit of flex inside, but not much, there's really not much anybody can do. It's about where it's going to be.
So, if, if in, to go back to the beginning, to your point, I think, Elizabeth, if, if 2.5 overall is largely focused on this fiscal year, the addition of that interpretation to one of the detail policies underneath that may not be appropriate.
Well, I think, I think we've got a couple follow-ups with David, because in, in the overall policy, it does say, or fail to be derived from a multi-year plan, so it does keep the door open for more than a fiscal year.
Yeah.
So, I think, John, if you could kind of circle back with David on the multi-year aspect, and then those, those expenses that we know straddle multi-years. We've got labor contracts, we've got capital improvement projects, we've got bonds for debt service, and there may be others. I think that's the general question.
Stewardship plan in general here.
Yeah, exactly.
So, what, if, if the board's amenable, we can have John circle back with David on-
Yep.
-that particular area for feedback to the board. Okay?
Yeah, I definitely, more has to be clarified, because if you look at what the interpretation of multi-year planning is, that, that is at the very end of the document, and it's really focused on what we know and what we're planning, which is a stewardship plan. It also brings in this, the shared services component, but there's not really that much action in that going on right now. It, it doesn't incorporate into this where we see staffing, salaries, healthcare, and the 80% of what we spend money on. Yeah, we may, we may have to, I mean, really dig deeper on this one, not tonight, but when we have David around and-
Was there anything more specific on Detail Policy 2 that the board wants to make sure we communicate to the superintendent? So, why don't we shift to Detail Policy 3? And I'm opening the door that even the interpretation may be subject to, but is the, is, are there any questions on the interpretation? So, that may be clear, and how about the evidence for Detail Policy 3?
I think that's fine.
Evidence is good.
Yep.
Okay, so we will-
The one thing I would like, just because this is an opportunity to make this comment, is I think the board can do a better job of providing constraining guidance for, to the, to the administration earlier. I think it's a difficult process for everybody to deal with when in December we suddenly decide there are some things that either didn't get taken care of, or we didn't like the way they were taken care of, or we're not sure about. So, I would really urge the board to find a way in the September, October time period to give some guidance on really salient things. And if it, if it's nil, that's fine, as long as it's a conscious thing that goes in. I mean, it's like, you know, if, the, I, I know we did as individuals, we state, we state certain things to them, but as a board, I think it'd be really good to give some guidance on salient things like the way capital, the way capital investment is being done, the way staffing is being handled, the mix between professionals- the mix between professionals and not, and, and support personnel and doing things. These kinds of things, okay, which could have a profound effect upon, if I were the budgeter, I'd really want to know if you had, if you had serious worries in any of those directions, okay? If it's tax rate that's, that's the primary issue, that's okay too. But, you know, any, anything that's a guiding principle, if we could do a, I think we can do a better job of articulating that as a board. I think we do do it as individuals, but in my experience, I don't see it happening as a board. And I'm not sure whether that's, what, what the mechanism for doing that should be, whether that has to be a public thing or whether that can be an executive session thing or, or how, I'd have to get some guidance from-
Yeah, I think, I think, Dan, the practice has been to have a first pass that's an administrative roll-up, and then the board is responding to that. But the timeframe for the three public hearings-
Well, I'm just suggesting then, you know, I appreciate John's comments. I don't know if he chooses to comment, but, you know, if there was some guidance about before the first pass, it, you know, I don't think we've had really bad experiences in the last, last few years, but I can envision there, seeing what's going on in the state and other places, I can imagine. I mean, for example, there was an implied thing that we wanted to be below the threshold on, on the Act 46. I don't know that we ever stated that, okay? I think it was an understanding. I'm just suggesting that the board ought to think about what, how it wants to handle that, whether that's, you know, in the spirit of the policy governance, I think it's the role of the board to make clear any hard guidelines, guard walls, constraints, whatever they might be, make those clear as early as possible. At least I, if I had to administer, I would want to know as soon as possible where you wanted to, where you, where you expected to end up. So that if there was a problem in doing that, I could tell you, look, we're going to have a problem in doing that, okay? So, anyway, John, if you choose to comment, that'd be great, but I hope I'm not putting you in position of awkwardness.
No, no, this is great, actually. The, I've tried the last three or four years to say, let's forget what's going on at the state level because let's see what we really need to do, what our budget should be. And, and, and you really can't because there's changing law at the state level, which affects every district and even the Act 46 spending cap. And I'm, forget that you're here. It's not you.
We're not going to say that, is there?
She was giving me a look as if it's my fault, but that's okay.
No, it's not. It's just the way it is.
We need to hold these legislators accountable.
But I know that every business manager that I, that I've come across or heard talk or, their, their focus is almost always on the state. And of course, we're a pool of funds to assure equity across the state, so you can't divorce the two. But, but we need to do a little bit more of what Dan said, is what, what do we need to have to operate the schools to the best? Do we really want to develop a better program here and, or not? You know, that kind of thing, so. It, and it's, it's time-consuming, that's the one thing that hurts us, but.
Well, I, I mean, my perception is everything gets jammed into December. And it's, it's awkward to try to be responsive in any substantive way, if you will, okay?
Yeah, maybe we need to be more formal. I mean, I think through the course of various discussions through the summer, it became very clear that we did have in mind the threshold. It also became clear that we had significant concerns about the FTEs. And that's why when it came to us with more FTEs going the wrong way as far as what we thought we had set, we really scrutinized that. And it required some very serious justification for us to approve those. But we could formalize those kind of things certainly early on, but-
Well, they're serious enough. I mean, this, this should, in my mind, this should be the biggies, right? Not, you don't want to micromanage what's going on in the line items, but just say, here's a goal. And, and, you know, and I think staffing is one with, I think we all voiced it, but I don't think we collectively voiced it. And I think, at least I was surprised at the response we got, okay? The initial response we got.
And I would add, this, to me, ties back to this visioning plan as well. Because some, that is, in some ways, once we have a plan on, you know, we're looking five years out as a board, that informs the administration when they're planning the next year. Because they see what we're looking at in a, in a longer-term vision. So, that definitely helps that process, I think.
Yeah, and it's going to require that the board get some binoculars to look out there, okay?
Yeah, exactly, yep, yep.
Put the headlamps on.
Maybe that needs to go on our calendar, you know, like, maybe it needs to be an end of summer.
It would be a great discussion for a late summer, what we call retreats, which are really these-
Work sessions.
Less, less formalized, structured things, more, it'd be a great, 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 in my mind, it'd be a great time for the board to handle it. I, I know the administration has some difficult challenges at the end of the summer as a new school year is starting, but.
So, are we at a point where we can close out the conversation on 2.5? Do you have adequate feedback to share with David, John?
I do, I do. The schools out and nutrition services write-up? I don't see it here. That's the, because there, there is a separate page, so.
It's here, I think it's in this other, it's in the exhibits, right?
Oh, exhibits, yes, of course, forgot about those. The, the one thing that wasn't said while Lee's here, I look at Lee as almost a, he has 400 kids he's looking after. The more of that work that's done in the business office, the better off the whole district will be. And, and we've learned that. And so, we're doing some, a little bit of restructuring to get this going so it's off from his back. He's a, he's actually a leader with vision. And we don't expect our principals to collect tuition, so it's just one thing I just wanted to point out that we understand that.
All right, so maybe that's a good, actually, we'll hold the idea of a work session related to preliminary guidance from the board for maybe a future, put it in future agenda item. But let's move on to setting the agenda for March 2nd.
So, Delina, can we add the academic calendar to that?
Is that an action item?
Yeah.
Would the action right away, or?
Oh, unless there's something, some big change. Is there a big change? Yeah.
We could get that ahead of time, too. So, we'll add the calendar as an action?
Is, when would be the, I'm trying to remember, we had a, a work plan at one point that we had worked through. Is it appropriate to bring that up and expose that back to us as we're looking at the calendar? Or is that completely a separate thing?
The, the big schedule?
Yeah, the 11 by 17.
Actually, that's probably a good time to do that with the reconfiguration of the board and a new board member coming on. So, can we add in the overall policy governance work plan? What's the title of that, Delina?
New work agenda plan, we re-boarded it, I don't want, actually, I have it.
Isn't that from July?
Yeah.
We usually do it at your work session.
Right.
We need to schedule.
But it might be good to recalibrate everybody as a new board.
Didn't we just have a work session?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Your work session might be.
It'd be good to just make a good quarter.
Okay, so we'll add the policy governance plan, we'll add the calendar, which hopefully are relatively short items. Any other items that we know about at this point?
It's just a note, at 5:45, Donna Kinville from the City Clerk will be at the orchard to swear in any new board members. So, then that's prior to the executive session starting at 6:00.
All right. So, future agenda items? It sounds like we should add one on, I don't know if we want to call it just the work session, but budget guidance? Is that how we characterize it?
Can we just, can we just put a date on it, like August?
We have a work session in August.
Oh, we do?
We do, okay. So, we'll put it as a specific item to be included in that August work session?
Okay.
Is anything that can come off here?
No.
We can put, we can add also, update the board review process, which is completely wasted time.
Let's put that on the work session, or do we want to wait that long?
Let's jettison it between now and then and talk about it at the work session.
Put it on a hiatus for a little while?
A hiatus.
You can assign the task to Julie and get it off the clerk's shoulders.
Yeah, I don't think so.
There we go, just make Julie the clerk next time.
Is there consensus that we have a little hiatus on the current board self-evaluation and revisit that at the August work session?
Consensus?
I'm seeing, anyone object? All right.
Perhaps I should object.
You could be in the audience next time and say, what are you doing about self-evaluation?
Dan's going rogue his last few minutes here.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item 16. Consider the many, many, yeah, minutes of the meeting of February 3rd.
So, there, there, on the executive session, where it says administrative staff and Tim Ford, Sina, and there was another woman there, but I can't tell you her name. David May now.
Okay.
No, he doesn't know. Tim Ford would know.
So, we have to fill in another attendee?
That's the only thing I caught.
Yeah.
All right, with that change then, by consensus, those minutes are approved. And the consent agenda, it looks like we have a resignation by Mark Juno from the high school. That's not an action, correct?
No, it's a no.
All right, thank him for his service. AP, or move on to agenda 18, AP orders 29 and 30. Any questions or comments? Move on to agenda item 19. We have an AP order checked to the Howard Center in the amount of $77,005.68, requiring board action. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it to be approved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John, do you want to just comment for the public on?
Right, the Howard Center provides services for many of our students. And this, this is an invoice basically for December. There is also a billing update from summer school that straddled a line, you'll see, of a couple thousand dollars, I believe, that was in June, that our special ed department reconciled with the Howard Center. So, that's, that's the reason there's a little bit more there.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion passes? And do I have a-
Can I have a moment?
Yes, you may be.
So, let me, before we adjourn, I assume we're going to adjourn soon. Let me just thank you all for bearing with me. I can be overbearing at times, I know. At some, some points, I just don't give up on very easily. I do appreciate it. And John, I very, I very much thank you for your kind words in the beginning. Appreciate that.
Sure.
And I hope that in net, my presence here has been a net positive for what's, for what's happened in the district. And I think it's a great district, I think it's doing wonderful things. I think it is a de facto leader. And there are times when I wish we would be a little more assertive in finding ways to make the good things that we do much more visible to the, to the world, especially locally. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
It's been a pleasure and an honor.
Yes.
It's my honor.
You raised the bar. And with that, can I take a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned.